Okay, it looks like it's about 6:30, so if you guys like, we can get started. Call the meeting to order. This is the ZIBA meeting, zoning board of examiners and appeals for July 13th, 2017. Could you do a roll call, please?
Dean Kars.
Here.
Stephanie Iker.
Here.
Lisa Doll.
Here.
Ken Ayers.
Here.
Tanya Hickok.
Here.
Dave Hale.
Here.
Timothy Vig and Ellen McKay have been excused. Thank you.
And it looks like we have a quorum. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes for June 8th, 2017? Does anyone have any additions or edits? Can I get a motion to approve, please? Ms. Iker.
I move to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Seconded by Mr. Ayers. Are there any objections? Seeing none, the minutes are approved as submitted. Onto C, special orders of business. Are there any disclosures?
Mr. Chairman, I was absent at the last meeting, so I will abstain from voting on the resolutions that are before the board.
Your excuse from that, thank you. Are there any other disclosures? Seeing none, we can move on to the consent agenda. Is there? So could I have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Move to approve.
I second.
Thank you. Would anyone like to pull anything from the consent agenda? No. Are there any objections to approval of the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. I don't think we have any other, any appearance requests, I don't think. No unfinished business. So we're on to the regular agenda. We have one case. So the way it'll go is we'll announce the case number and we'll get the staff to give us some input and then have, open the public hearing. The petitioner will have 10 minutes. Any groups in the audience will have five and individuals get three. So with that, we'll introduce the case and get the highlights from staff. This is case number 2017-0035. Petitioner is Mr. Eric Lowman. And so will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On April 24th, 2017, 190 public hearing notices were sent out to neighboring property owners. A notice of public hearing was also mailed to the Girdwood Board of Supervisors and as of this writing, one public comment has been received.
Thank you. Are there any objections to the sufficiency of the notice? Seeing none. Will the staff please present the case?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The petitioner requests a variance from Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Chapter 9, Subsection 060, to allow a single-family residence to encroach 6.5 feet into a required 20-foot front yard setback. The application also mentions a request for a variance for a side yard setback encroachment. However, nonconforming rights for the 2.4-foot eastern side yard encroachment have been established, making this part of the variance request unnecessary. The 6.5-foot encroachment into the required 20-foot front yard setback was discovered by a registered land surveyor when surveying for a final ASBIL following completion of construction authorized under a land use permit number 01-1385 issued by the municipality. An approved 2001 ASBIL submitted along with the land use permit application shows an existing residential structure with a proposed expansion. The distance between the front lot line and the proposed expansion is not dimensioned in this ASBIL. It is unclear why this land use permit was approved by the municipality without this dimension being shown on the provided ASBIL. The current owner, Eric Lowman, inherited the property from his parents in 2010. Mr. Lowman's parents pursued a dimensional variance in 2004, which was case 2004-124, but were denied the variance by a 3-3 vote of the board. The 2004 resolution denying the variance was included in the petitioner's application. As far as findings, for finding A, or standard A, there exist exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances of the subject property, including but not limited to streams, wetlands, or slope, and such physical circumstances are not applicable to other land in the same district. The standard is not met. There appear to be no exceptional physical circumstances of the land that warrant the granting of this variance. The lot is affected by Class C wetlands, however, ample space exists on site to accommodate a structure of equal or greater size. Other construction impediments such as streams or slopes do not affect this parcel. For standard B, because of these physical circumstances, the strict application of code creates an exceptional or undue hardship upon the property owner and would deprive the applicant of commonly enjoyed or other properties in the same district under the terms of the zoning ordinance. The standard is partially met. While there are no physical circumstances of the land contributing to the need for this variance, the strict application of code would create an undue hardship on the owner. Prior to the applicant's parents purchasing this property, the existing structure was constructed in accordance with an approved building permit from the municipality. If the variance were not approved, the petitioner would have to demolish and reconstruct a portion of his home at great personal expense. Standard C, the hardship is not self-imposed and special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant, and such conditions and circumstances do not merely constitute inconvenience. The standard is met. Mr. Lowman was not involved in the original construction of the residence, and thus there exists no evidence to consider him responsible for the structure's encroachment. Standard D, the variance, if granted, will not adversely affect the use of adjacent property as permitted under this code. The standard is met. Given the character, history, and zoning of the neighborhood, it does not appear that the granting of this variance will adversely affect the use of adjacent properties. Standard E, the variance, if granted, does not change the character of the zoning district where the property is located and is in keeping with the intent of the code and does not permit a use not otherwise permitted in the district in which the property lies. The standard is met. The requested variance will not change the character of the zoning district and will meet the intent of code. Granting this dimensional variance will not permit a use other than what is already allowed under current code. Standard F, the variance, if granted, does not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality of Anchorage. The standard is met. No adverse effects to health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality are anticipated if the variance is approved. The variance will have minimal to no impact on neighboring residents in terms of impeding traffic flow, view sheds, or limiting the ability of adjacent property owners to make full use of their land. Standard G, persons with disabilities are provided with access as required by the Americans with Disabilities Act and reasonable accommodation. This standard is not applicable to detached, single-family residents. Standard H, the variance granted is the minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land. Standard is partially met. This residence is located on a lot that can accommodate the placement of a structure equal to or greater than the size of the current residence in a conforming location. Taking into account lot size, mapped wetlands on site, and applicable setback requirements, this parcel has approximately 1,349 square feet of buildable area on which to locate a structure. Current residence has a building footprint of 800 square feet and could have been located in a conforming location on the subject parcel. However, this residence was constructed in accordance with an approved land use permit from the municipality. Granting this variance will allow the current owner to make lawful and reasonable use of this existing single-family residence. Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Chapter 3, Subsection 240-G2 requires that all of the eight standards be substantially met in order that a variance be granted. The department finds that standard A is not met. Standards B and H are partially met, and C through G are substantially met. Therefore, staff must recommend denial of this variance. And there was one comment, one public comment that came in after the staff packet had been finalized from a Mrs. Jan Nyboer, last name spelled N-Y-B-O-E-R, and it reads as follows: "Setbacks are required for good reason to maintain distance and privacy. I don't see anything unusual in the shape of the lot that would warrant special circumstance consideration." End quote. And the petitioner did also receive a resolution of support from the Girdwood Board of Supervisors. Unfortunately, that did not make its way into the staff packet. But that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of staff on the board? Ms. Iker.
Thank you, through the chair. I was wondering if staff could speak to page 56 of the packet. It looks like there's a shaded area on the back, almost half of the lot, that indicates the Class C wetlands. Is, am I, or maybe you could just talk to me a little about what Class C wetlands entails as far as developing, because the way that I'm looking at this, the house is actually placed on the buildable portion of the property. So any insight and explanation would be appreciated.
Through the chair, Ms. Iker, this is a map showing the current municipality of Anchorage wetland mapping layer using GIS software, geographic information software, showing where the approximate line and location of wetlands are on site. And you are correct, the house is placed on the northeast corner of the lot, and the mapped wetlands, they are rated as Class C, which can be built upon with the appropriate permitting, but it is an expensive endeavor that does require a backfill. Did you have any further questions on the graphic?
Actually, one more question through the chair. I was wondering if my understanding of the original permit that was issued by the municipality, it was reviewed and approved, but apparently was issued in error because there was a dimension missing on the proposed plans. Is that correct?
Through the chair, that is correct.
Okay. And that error wasn't caught until after the fact?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a quick question, if you don't mind. On the exhibit, we're looking at page 54, it looks to me like this is a plot plan, not an ASBIL. Is that right? Do you know?
Mr. Chairman, technically, yes, that is correct. It's a modified ASBIL that was used as a plot plan.
So with a plot plan, that's the proposed construction, and if you do the simple math on here, you can see that there's an encroachment in the setback, 15 and a half feet. So I mean, this is the point where they could have said, hey, you need to move your building, and I would, I'm kind of wondering about, you know, the physical limitations of the physical conditions of the land that would dictate the placement of it, right? So you've got a huge amount of wetlands, and I mean, I don't like building my house right up on wetlands, so I would tend to move it away from it as well. So I'm kind of wondering, was there some consideration for the fact that they thought the placement was okay? You know, the homeowner, because they're not professionals, you know, they're hiring professionals to represent them, they're relying on the process that the municipality has in place to look at the plot plan and go, oh, hey, you're encroaching, you may want to move it. And then at that point, they could. So I'm just kind of curious, have you guys thought maybe there were some physical limitations with A to dictate the placement of the building at least?
Mr. Chair, it's difficult for me to speak as to exactly how the decision was made back in 2001. I tried to find some historical information through that building permit. There was very limited information in the file. But what I will say is that in order for this structure to be placed where it currently is with an encroachment, it would have needed a variance at that time.
Any other questions? Ms. Hickok.
Through the chair, staff. Is there an offset requirement for wetlands in Title 21? A setback requirement for wetlands?
Mr. Chair, it's hard for me, I can't state the exact setback off the top of my head here. Streams, I know, definitely have a setback, but as of off the top of my head, I can't speak to that.
Okay. Thank you.
And I can't remember if it's just A and B or C. I don't remember either. I think there's a natural setback that people want to be away from it. Mr. Kars.
Yes, thank you, through the chair. Looking at page nine of the staff packet, aerial photo showing the development in Cortina, and it looks like all the lots are built on. You'd indicated that there had not, or I believe there's a resolution received from the Board of Supervisors in support of this variance. And if I misunderstood that, please correct me, but one of the past board members I remember used to ask, why do we care on something like this? It's a developed subdivision. It encroaches, but it doesn't sound like there've been any significant issues associated with the encroachment. So from a board's, board member's perspective, can you give me any insight on, is this a big issue or not from the municipality's perspective?
Well, through the chair, from the municipality's perspective, we have a structure that's encroaching into a setback and is therefore nonconforming and is not compliant with current zoning laws. As far as how much standing a resolution of support from the Girdwood Board of Supervisors has, it's just my understanding that the applicant had approached the Girdwood Board of Supervisors looking for a resolution of support, and they decided to go ahead and draft one up and vote on one and issue him a resolution of support. Exactly how much bearing that has on this board's decision, that rests with the board.
Thank you.
And Ms. Hickok.
Through the chair, Mr. Yell. It appears there was a nonconforming lot of record, this is a nonconforming lot of record, for 9,000 square foot, correct? And the allowable or the minimum lot in GR2 is 10,000? So isn't that a 1,000-square-foot deficient lot, which is a physical circumstance, is that not?
Through the chair, yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Through the chair. I have another question relating to the picture on page 26 of our packet. I just wanted to know what that area to the left of the house was that's not in the mapped wetlands. Is that, could you describe the topography or anything like that? I don't know if you can tell. Or what, if it's...
Through the chair, Ms. Build, do perhaps page 25?
No, 56, I'm sorry if I misspoke, the last page, the back page of the packet.
Through the chair, the area to the left of the house, to my knowledge, it's not mapped wetlands, I can say that based upon the data that we have. It is relatively flat, and perhaps the petitioner can go into a little more detail. The site information that I have for you would be on page one of the staff packet on the bottom half of the page describing the vegetation and topography.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Are we good? Any other questions? So would the petitioner please come up to the stand here? And if you could, state your name and spell it for the record, please.
Eric Lowman, E-R-I-C-L-O-W-M-A-N. And I haven't been this nervous since I was an intern.
Yeah, just relax, and you've got 10 minutes, so just proceed whenever you're ready.
Okay. In the early 2000s, my parents bought this house, and the variance issue was a known issue, but as it was a cash purchase, that was not an issue. So in 2010, I inherited the house. So along with the house, I inherited the issue. So I'm trying to take care of that ultimately. Hang on one second. I speak publicly for a living, you'd think I'd be used to this. Anyways, so I'm going along, living in the house, just happy as a clam. It's a very nice judge about my parents. And then about three and a half years ago, I was diagnosed with Parkinson's. And then with about five years left in my teaching career, I started thinking about, what am I going to do later on in life when this progressive disease gets a little worse? Am I going to be able to negotiate stairs, et cetera, et cetera? So I started the variance process and hoping, as the house stands now, it cannot get conventional financing from banks, so we'd have to find somebody who is a cash buyer. And by granting a variance, it would allow me to either sell the house now or at a later time and pursue a single level structure which would accommodate what's to come. And I went through the Girdwood Land Use Committee and the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, and as indicated, they did offer me a resolution, write a resolution of support, and I'm very thankful for that. And that's kind of where we're at right now with a house. So to address the staff's report, placement discrepancy, it was an approved Muni plan, I'm sorry, any further south and it might be built on wetlands and might not have the greatest of foundations. I think someone alluded to that fact or that issue earlier. And the physical circumstances, it was a Muni-approved plan. So see-through for that, G was not applicable, and minimal variance, again, it was built within a Muni-approved plan, so. At the base of it all, I'm just trying to be proactive so I can be the least impactful on the community later on in my life.
Okay, so you've got seven minutes and 20 seconds left, and you can keep speaking if you want, or you can just hold on to it for later for rebuttal if you like?
No, hold on to it later for rebuttal.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have questions for the applicant? Nobody?
Yes, through the chair.
Is yours not working?
Could you describe the lot generally? What, there's the house, there's the wetlands, and what else is on the property and what's the topography like?
It's mostly marshy out back, hence the wetlands. And two, looking at the house to the right, is it dirt or a solid structure? So, and then the house, so.
So next to the house on the property is just kind of a big, flat dirt area?
Yes.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay.
Anyone else? Were you living with your folks when they built the place, or?
No.
I was wondering if there, you know, of any consideration of, you know, the wetlands that...
The guy who built it, the joke of my family is that it was half arrogance, half ignorance. I can't speak to what his mindset was when he built the property, and then my parents bought the property from the contractor.
We have no other questions, and there's no one else here to speak. Do you want to use the rest of your time for anything, or?
No, our time is precious, so.
Okay. All right, thanks. We appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Is no one else to testify? Does the staff have any rebuttal or anything? Okay, so the public hearing is closed, and the matter is now going to rest with the board. So may I please have a positive motion?
Mr. Chairman, case number 2017-0035, I move for approval of the variance from AMC 2109060 to allow residential structure to encroach 6 and 1/2 feet into the required 20-foot front yard setback. Subject to staff's conditions on page six of the packet.
And Ms. Iker's seconded?
I have.
Would you like to speak to your motion, Mr. Ayers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My findings are, on condition A, that there are physical circumstances that affect this lot, one of them being it is a nonconforming lot of record, two is impacted by wetlands, and three, and I think probably most important in this case, is the physical location of the primary structure before the addition. And if I could come up with a clear enough reasoning to add the approval of the land use permit as justification under that specific finding, I would add that as well. The addition was made, and it was approved and signed off by the municipality, and obviously there was an error made. Condition number B, I find that this condition is met. I agree with staff's findings there. It is certainly an undue hardship on the property owner, who has inherited this property, to correct this issue, and has existed for a number of years. And I know for a fact that it's a right commonly enjoyed by a number of properties in this area. I surveyed the entire subdivision for Anchorage Water and Wastewater Utility, and I'm very familiar with the area. Condition C, I agree with staff's findings, the standard is met, it's not self-imposed. Condition D, the standard is also met, I agree with staff, as I just stated, the character, history, and zoning of the neighborhood. This is a very common occurrence in Girdwood. And condition F, I find that this condition is met, agreeing with staff's justification here. I would also point out that there was no con... I would also point out that there was no comment from rideaway or traffic regarding any issue with potential vehicles parking in front of the garage in the house into the street or into the street right of way. Condition G does not apply. I also find that condition H is met. It's very reasonable to have a garage for your house, be able to park vehicles there, and I believe that it is a reasonable use of the land. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. Is there any discussion?
Ms. Iker. Thank you, Chair. I would, I agree with my colleagues' findings, and I would like to add two points that I, to those remarks. First, I did find it persuasive that the Girdwood Board of Supervisors supported this application. And with regards to this standard H, I also agree that the standard is fully met, but because we have a permit that was issued by the municipality, that was apparently issued in error, and the plans were followed to construction, I think that there is very little room to question whether or not the encroachment is the minimal amount necessary to provide a garage. I think at this stage in the game, when we already have a structure that is fully complete, the variance allowed should be, or the minimum standard should simply be met by the structure. And I do plan to support the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Iker. Are there other comments? Mr. Cars.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I also agree to support the motion and agree with the findings of Mr. Ayers and Ms. Iker. And with respect to finding standard A, I think we've all alluded to the significant coverage of the wetlands on the map, you know, anywhere from 40% to 50%. That's a significant amount, so I do find that that weighs on my decision on finding that standard is met. And with respect to standard H, this is, it appears it's only a 20-foot-wide house that's been constructed in the encroachment, and so I do find that that is, in my opinion, the minimum amount of the variance. It's not a significant footprint of the house that's in that encroachment. So, for those reasons, I'll be supporting the motion as well.
Thank you, Mr. Cars. Anyone else? You ready to vote? And the motion passes. So, the variance is granted. Thank you very much for coming in and presenting. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
You bet. So, that's it for Case 2017-0035. Any reports? I don't have a report. Does anyone have comments? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Iker.
I move to adjourn.
Mr. Cars, second. Are there any objections to it? Motion is passed. Thank you very much.